Through you, Madam Chair. No, there are none. There is only an addition of a presentation to Item 6.1, but since there's only the two items on the agenda, there's no need to move it up to Presentations.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as presented? All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes, please, for June the 1st, 2017.
You got it.
Counselor Jackson, Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion items: Art Gallery of Cana...of Canada, of Hamilton Review of the Financial Requirements, GRA 17009, Citywide Outstanding Business List Item. John Hurtel will provide the presentation for Item 6.1. Are there any questions of... No, I'm kidding. Good afternoon, John, again.
Retail operations haven't been profitable since inception, and the rental space, due to the lack of amenities like kitchen facilities and the just...it's a very...it's a small room that can't host larger events, and hasn't been able to be profitable since inception. Management has currently taken measures to generate additional $70,000 in savings from this at the Annex. So comparative galleries...so this is where it gets a little bit interesting. The AGH compares well to provincial galleries. When we're comparing galleries, the two things...key things that we look at is the collection size and the square footage of the facilities, as those are the main two cost drivers. In terms of their collection size and the size of the building, the AGH compares much better to provincial-style galleries than it does to a municipal-style gallery. And in terms of the operation budget, $6 million is more in line with some of the provincial galleries than it is with a municipal gallery, which, on average, is around $2.5 million. So the AGH base funding is currently at 17%. The only form of base funding they get is from the CEF, which is the City Enrichment Fund, with all funds coming from, obviously, us. And the industry average for government-based funding is between 30% and 50%. So there's a significant shortfall between what an average gallery gets in the industry and what they're receiving as base funding. So the AGH has taken steps to kind of address this. They have put applications forth for both provincial and federal-based funding. The applications are currently pending. And so, as I'd mentioned earlier, due to the underfunding of government-based funding, they have about a $500,000 deficit each year. And this is a visual of where the AGH compares with other comparative galleries. If you take a look, the red box is this gallery, Art Gallery of Hamilton. The light blue is their operating budget, and that compares well to, like, Winnipeg Art Gallery, Nova Scotia Art Gallery, the Gallery of Alberta. And if you take a look at the blue chart, the bar graph, it shows how much of their funding is from government-based funding. They're much lower than most comparable galleries, and they're at 17%, whereas the majority of them are hovering around the 35% to 45%, 50% range. This just gives you some key metrics that the AGH was able to provide us. In terms of government-based funding, we had mentioned they're at 17%. Industry averages between 30% and 50%. Earned revenue, they earn about 50% of their revenue compared to industry average of about 33%. And salaries as a percentage of the operating budget, they're about 38%, whereas the industry average is 47%. So these kind of metrics would indicate that they are operating very efficiently in terms of industry standards. And that kind of concludes the presentation, and open it up to any questions.
Thank you. I have Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Tamim and John, thank you very much. Can you, Tamim, just go back a couple of slides to comparative galleries, please?
Yep.
For me, thank you, Tamim. And you and John did everything we asked you to do in bringing this review forward at this time. So how much do they get from the provincial or federal governments? Through you, Madam Chair.
Tamim?
Through the Chair. Currently, they're receiving zero base funding from the federal and provincial levels of government.
Well...
Counselor?
Here's part of our problem. All due respect to the art gallery, Madam Chair, and since amalgamation, I'd like to think, despite of reservations from time to time, I've been there supporting them, the capital campaign, John, Tamim, before you guys arrived, about 10 years ago, if memory serves me, right, about a $15 to $20 million earmarked from municipal government for the expansion, the capital campaign, the new front windows, the sign-on King, et cetera, the landscaping out back, funding on Main. Anyways, so here we are, guaranteed literally $1 million a year for the gallery, basically over the last...since amalgamation, I'll say, if I'm off by a couple of years, I apologize, and zero money from the federal provincial governments. Is the new executive director, and she's inherited this, so you've got to give her time, but has Ms. Faulkner, has the Board of Directors, are they doing, John, Tamim, to your knowledge, something about this?
Through the Chair. From, I'll say, an operations point of view, and I'm certainly no art critic, but from a business point of view, when we review their...both their strategic plan and their operations plan, they're really on the right targets for moving this forward. And one of the main areas that they're working very aggressively on right now, specifically the CEO Shelley Faulkner, is on securing provincial and/or federal funding. From our simple...even, we didn't do this as a recommendation report, but when we, I'll say, make the observations, big checkmarks for the operational side of the business and the changes that they're making, really focusing on the core business, getting more engaged in the community, being more diversified, honoring and recognizing the regional and local aspects of both the gallery, excuse me, and their target audience. So all of that gets a big checkmark. The big gap to us, as you point out, Counselor Jackson, is that there is no other source of base funding right now on a sustained basis. What they have been getting from the feds or province have been very project-specific. So usually, they would be capital projects that they're doing, they apply for a grant, and it could be a shared expense, so, you know, a matching kind of grant. But that's the only consistent source of federal or provincial funding so far, but they are aggressively working towards that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Well, I'm...thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad and encouraged cautiously to hear that with the new executive director. Makes you wonder, I mean, all this time's gone by, and, I mean, you know, that would be so much easier for the municipality as well if we just did project-oriented as well for the gallery, and that $1 million, so many other groups out there. And so I'm cautiously encouraged, John. And I'd like to, John, on that point, if, as far as I'm concerned, we need to have from time to time an update. I know we're not Shelley's board, she reports directly to her board. I think Counselor Pearson's our rep. I don't...we used to have two. Did we appoint a second one, or is it just Counselor Pearson?
John?
We did, I believe, through the Chair. I believe Counselor Vanderbeek, you were on the board and then resigned from the board, and Counselor Pearson is the current single council representative.
So we didn't replace Counselor Vanderbeek, then? So we still only have one?
I think so.
Correct, okay. So, anyway, so let's hope with the board and the new executive director, they make some inroads with the...I mean, it's just mind-boggling to me that the province and feds, if this is one of the oldest, largest galleries in the country, that they haven't come forward at this time with some sustainable funding, like the municipality has done, which much more limited resources. How about membership, John? Tamim, were you able to gather? I've always...and maybe it's a little more traditional and possibly a little outdated, but I've always felt any organization, and even in a digital way, any organization that has a solid base of members, paid-up members, contributing members, volunteer members, I have found in my lifetime and in politics, they are usually some of the most successful. Any idea of their membership, John, and even as it ebbed and flowed over the years? Is it down dramatically? Is it held steady? Any idea between you and Tamim?
Thank you, John.
Through the Chair, the one...
Thank you.
Part I am familiar with is their, I'll say, the attendance of tours through children, schoolchildren. That number has hovered pretty steadily around 9,000. As a sidebar, when I spoke to CEO Shelley Faulkner about what that number represents, it's not quite the same number as attends one kid's hockey game for the Bulldogs each year. So they have a very specific plan to expand the...both at the elementary, high school, and post-secondary involvement for having those kind of very extensive tour groups through. But as far as pure membership, I'm going to ask Tamim if he recalls that from the operations review.
So based on our conversations with the finance manager, from 2016 to 2015, there was an increase in membership revenue. And also, in terms of comparing to the industry, they do generate about 50% of their revenues internally, not like, not donations or, I mean, not grants or whatnot. So they are a little bit higher than the industry average when it comes to earned revenue. So they are, I guess, aggressively pursuing those kind of things in terms of, as John had said, they're moving away from a focus on the art curriculum and kind of going to, like, genocide studies and history studies and kind of developing those relationships with the school boards to kind of expand and grow their education department, because that's where they see the majority of the growth coming in for the gallery.
So Tamim, can you, and again, beyond today, and through our appointed representative, Counselor Pearson, I'm glad she's arrived. We were just talking about the provincial feds, how they've been lacking over the years in providing, but your new executive director is aggressively pursuing that, which is encouraging. So is there any way, gentlemen, you can take under advisement? I'd like to see a hard and fast, even a five-year average of membership, and what kind of revenue that membership brings in. That 9,000 you mentioned, though, John, that was a one-time tour type of thing? That was a 9,000 members, was it, or was it?
Excuse me, through the Chair, it's an annual number of school tours that come through.
Oh, that's school tours, okay.
But as far as pure membership, we'd be happy to secure from the team at the gallery what the stats are for that.
Could you please, Madam Chair, that'd be great. Could you go back in slides? I don't have pages, unfortunately, here, Tamim. The slide that has Deficit Reduction Plan, can you go back a few there, please? Just quick...there it is, thank you. Okay, Measures Taken at the Annex. Just help me understand, is that an off-site premise that the gallery owns? Madam Chair, through you.
Yes, through the Chair. It's a property that they're leasing on James North called the Design Annex, and they've tried a variety of different, I'll say, combinations of bringing the gallery to the community through that particular venture. It is not proven to be a profit maker, for sure, so they've taken steps recently and have more plans on the books...
Okay.
...to bring that around to be at a minimum neutral, if not profit-making.
Okay. Hence, that amount up there, I guess, is going in that direction of what you've just indicated, John.
That's correct.
That's a step towards it. Okay. Who owns the collections at the gallery? I've heard that we own some, they own some, Tannenbaum owns some. Who owns the collections, John?
So it's an interesting question through the Chair, and one that I know Anna and her team, and we've had many discussions, both with legal and, of course, the gallery's legal advisors as well. It is our understanding, and I'm going to ask Anna to correct me if I'm wrong, that the city owns some of the collection pre-1967. The gallery owns the collection post-1967. And I'll look to Anna for a nod, and I'm getting a positive nod.
So the last 50 years, the gallery owns. Anything that's come in pre-67, the city owned it?
That is correct, through the Chair.
Wow, what an interesting conundrum there, a mix of ownership. Last slide, that one, Tamim, you've got the 1516 business unit analysis. Thank you. So all the pinkish up there is kind of like deficit? Is that what I'm seeing there? So Department of Administration, 685 grand deficit showing, Tamim?
So, yeah, the...through the Chair, that business unit does not have a strong source of revenue. So it's basically a cost center. There's not a lot of revenues coming in to that unit. The only source of income coming in is through the investment account. So anything, any income they generate in their investment account is applied against that business unit, but it's majority a cost center.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Chair, if you allow me, a closing comment. John, again, as I stated before Counselor Pearson came in, and she's been an excellent advocate for the gallery for a number of years, she's been appointed there. My closing comment, John and Tamim, for what my opinion's worth as your continuing dialogue moving forward. And when the Arts Task Force was set up, we heard from a lot of groups, I could name a number of them, and I won't, who, if you will, in a competitive way, always felt like they were at the short end of the municipal funding stick, and the gallery just, you know, nice charmed life for, since amalgamation, give or take, almost can rely on, an annual $1 million, didn't have to file applications, set in stone, and I was there, so I'm not, you know, exonerating myself from supporting it in the initial stages. Good lobby group came in of citizens, Board of Director members, a couple of former mayors made a good pitch, and the former executive director, well-informed and brought a lot of talent to the table. But as the years went along, John and Tamim, Madam Chair, I got to a point where every budget, I was kind of questioning, this is continuously automatic? It's wrong that it's continuously automatic unless they're going through the process like everyone else. And you know, John, in the last year or two, we've increased the arts funding by about a half a million a year through the work of the task force and your staff, and Director of Culture and Tourism, Anna Bradford's staff. And many of those groups said, hey, we're kind of forgotten here, as one or two big ones seem to be getting the lion's share in the arts category, in the arts envelope. So my closing message, John, is it can't be par for the course anymore for the gallery. The automatic million a year, no worry about going through application process, not worrying about seeking other levels of funding, relying literally on this one level of government. For me, those days are over. So, Madam Chair, just my closing comment to you, John, has that kind of messaging already started to be conveyed?
Thank you, Counselor, and through the Chair. For, just to, I guess, put it in context to some degree, prior to the establishment or, you know, sort of redesign of the City Enrichment Fund, they were part of the Boards and Agencies category and really didn't have any oversight, I'll say, from the city in terms of the kind of detailed review that we've been doing the last few years. So they've actually gone through the City Enrichment process the last three years, and they've been adjudicated and have scored very well. So in its simplest context of the City Enrichment Fund, where they now sit, they've scored 80 or above, they've met the broad criteria of being less than 30%, in fact, it's 17% of their budget. But from a business point of view and an operations point of view, as you indicated earlier, to us, the biggest gap is the lack of provincial or federal-based funding. So I think when I look at it again from an operations point of view, and I see the work that they've done in terms of establishing a new strategic plan and operating plan, if you ever do get an opportunity to read the attachment, it's actually a really, really well-done plan. And as long as they hit those targets, you'd have to give them a checkmark, I'll say, for doing all the right things from an activity point of view. We hope that they're successful in getting the provincial and federal funding. But I think they feel somewhat comfortable being part of the City Enrichment Fund because we're doing this analysis together. They've been very, very supportive and would be very willing to come back and do, and give us the information, for example, to do regular updates at the, sort of, the choosing of subcommittee as far as the frequency, et cetera. And I know the CEO Shelley Faulkner could do a far better job of describing her strategic plan and operating plan than I can, but I do have a strong sense of support in the way that we see what they're doing. So we're quite encouraged by it.
So, Madam Chair, forgive me, so just what something John said, then I just want to conclude with, just subsequent to what you just said, John. So I'm glad the last three years, they've been in the CEF process. So I can then presume, moving forward, unlike years gone by when we questioned the annual million and the fallback position of the Board of the AGH and the previous CEO, was, Counsel, you set up that indefinitely, that million. That excuse and rationale is no longer in front of us, correct, John? Madam Chair, through you.
Through the Chair, not quite.
Well, see, now that's what I'm getting at.
So what, as, sort of, I'll say, step one, we've done this review to try to ourselves better understand the unique requirements of a gallery. It's more like a museum, I'll say, than if I were to compare it to, say, Theater Aquarius and the kind of physical requirements they have versus a gallery museum. Very, very different. So I think when now we understand the operation well enough to feel comfortable that $1 million is certainly needed. Can they do different things to offset that in terms of federal and provincial? Absolutely. Should they continue to find additional revenue sources and improve the business? Absolutely. With specific reference to the ongoing $1 million, it's our understanding, and I'll ask maybe Stephanie to clarify, when we've reviewed this in the past, it's our understanding that because it was in a report approved by Council now 10 years ago, I think roughly, Counselor Jackson, that until another report would come forward recommending something different than that, then that would continue on. So it doesn't preclude Subcommittee and Committee and Council for recommending something different in a report, but until that were done, it would remain the same. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Excuse me for just a second, I think the clerk would like to chime in...
Please.
If you don't mind. Thank you, Stephanie.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, that's close, but there is slight twist. The resolution that was put forward 10 years ago, and I'm just estimating the time to do 11, or sorry, $1 million annually, could be changed in any term of council pass that without a reconsideration. Without a reconsideration, because the resolution was passed in a previous term. So if committee wants to change that, we would go forward and amend that original report at a council meeting. I would prepare a resolution for that. It wouldn't go to grant Subcommittee for that. You would, at that point, go forward, make an amendment if you wanted to, or, like John said, you could put something completely different forward, but we would still need to clean up that $1 million a year.
Okay.
Just through an amending motion, but it wouldn't require reconsideration if it was in a different term of count.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Stephanie, for chiming in from a legislative standpoint. And, John, I appreciate, thank you for reaffirming a little bit of my concern that there still are, if you will...so it's almost like the gallery, my words, has the best of both worlds. Yeah, they're now in the CFE process the last three years, but they've got this 10-year-old arrangement, agreement with the city that all else fails in CEF, they've got their indefinite $1 million a year. So I'd like to, pending the comments and opinions of the rest of my colleagues, at some point in time, John, I'd like to say that the luxury of having that million indefinitely forever, those days are over, and they're truly in 100% in the CEF process, like everybody else is, at some point in time, with Stephanie's help and your help with the wording. And if Committee and Council ultimately, Madam Chair, want to go in that direction, I think we need to remove that ambiguity, because it looks like they've got currently the best of both worlds, John. And if I, if my interpretation is inaccurate, please just, you know, conclude by telling me so, or my kind of interpreting correctly.
I think you're correct, sir. Through the Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Counselor Green, can you take the Chair for me, please? And thank you, Counselor Jackson, for your questions, and you're on the same boat that I was on. And it comes back to process adjudication, and you said they scored very well. With all due respect, so did Supercrawl, so did Peach Festival, and we could probably take the top 10, Theater Aquarius. But during the adjudication, that's when it was decided how much money would be recommended. So that's the one piece of the adjudication that's missing here. You're comfortable, that's great, but I still would like to see them be compared in that art adjudication that they've been put under, and I would still like to see that as well. I think it's Slide 7, Tamim. Could you please go back? I've tried to calculate...there we go. So if I heard you correctly, in 2015, they were able to sell a piece of art, and they are now 6 million in the good. And then 2016, they're 829,000 not in the good. So what do their reserves look like? So what do their reserves look like? If this was a $6 million asset, and then it went right almost to a million dollars deficit the very next year, so do they have reserves? What do their reserves look like?
Post-selling the actual artwork, they do have some board restricted funds. So the funds that, the sale of the collection, all the funds are, majority of the funds are in a board restricted fund, and therefore, because the dollars came from the sale of the collection, it's restricted for the maintenance of the collection.
Okay, so again, they're now in an $829,553 deficit according to 2016. So a quick question that came to mind was, I can remember in the past that we actually refused grants because there was such a deficit in the organization, in any organization. So again, adjudication would be very good here, would actually compare apples to apples for most of the ones that we have. And if you go to slide 10, this was up earlier with Counselor Jackson, if I add all this up, it's 390,000, and it, just about a third, maybe just less than a third of what their actual deficit is. So it's still not going to address their ongoing deficit, correct?
Correct, it would address a portion of the deficit, but not the entire deficit.
Okay, thank you. And utility cost savings, they don't pay city taxes, correct?
I, I'm not too sure if they do pay city taxes.
On a million dollars?
No.
Downtown prime?
No.
Okay, I'm just asking. Okay, so that was that, hang on a sec. So if the art gallery is successful in applying to the provincial and federal governments, which is way long overdue, does that then, again, question for the adjudicators, does that then adjust the amount we give them? Because my understanding is that they, that most grants that you get from higher levels of government are not to be used for operations, they're to be used for capital, specific programs, but not operational, correct?
If I may, it would appear, and again, this is not something that I would claim to be expert in, but when you look at some of the funding models of other galleries, it does appear that the province particularly, in some cases, is providing a base funding for the overall operation of the gallery.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. So again, my comment would be that if they went through a proper adjudication, that all the other organizations do, then that may come into play. It may show that they deserve more, it may show that they deserve less. So I think one of the reasons why I was really pushing for having everyone under one umbrella was because we seem to have three levels of funding. You would have the one where the council would come in on the fly and get the grant, the next one was, most of the organizations came in with a package this thick, had to go through Rosanna and the teams to make sure they dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And then the third level was all they had to do was stand at the podium with wearing a nice tie and saying, here we are. So this is why I, we kept pushing for the adjudication to be consistent for everyone. So I will take the chair back, thank you very much, Counselor Jackson, oh, Counselor Pearson.
No, there's no others, this is the president.
Yep, no.
Thank you, just as a representative on the art gallery, I just, I apologize for not making it sooner, unfortunately, I had a, I've got a flooding issue that I was dealing with, and, but I'm sure John and Tamim covered this off, and I want to thank them and Anna Bradford. I know this has been a difficult situation, I know the art gallery appreciates everything that has been done to assist over the years. They are tremendous custodians of the art that has been donated to the art gallery and some of it to the city of Hamilton, as has been raised earlier, because not all of the collection is owned by the city of Hamilton, and it's quite a convoluted sort of process to how things changed back in the late 60s, and I wasn't around then to know what happened with city council at the time. So I'm just certainly supportive of going forward, and I know Shelley Faulkner is doing her best, she's already had meetings with the province and the feds in getting a better fairness of assistance from the other levels to reduce the burden of what, you know, what they're coming from the city of Hamilton for every year. So I know that's being done, I know she's taken very, very big steps in getting this deficit down and dealing with the future grants that will secure the art gallery going forward in the future. So I just want to thank everybody here and certainly hope that we can continue to support the art gallery. I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, but I know just in one point, not sure of the taxes, I don't think we've ever discussed taxes at the art gallery, property taxes, because the land is owned by the city.
That's right.
So I'm not sure if there's a building component of it, but the land is owned by the city that the building sits on. And just in the HVAC and security, I know some of it's mentioned in some of the slides here, it's over a half a million dollars a year that's required just to preserve the service, the system there. So just putting that forward. Thank you, John and Tamim and Anna, thank you.
And thank you. Counselor Green, one more question, if you don't mind taking the chair. The artifacts that are actually city-owned, and maybe Anna could answer this question because I know we have pieces and throughout all the different municipal centers, the, are we paying any extra for the maintenance? Are you sending staff in? Are you taking care of this whatsoever, maintaining it whatsoever? Are you involved in this, where in fact, the million dollars could be even more so considering you are in fact sending staff in to take care of what we're supposed to be owners of?
So through the chair, the pre-1967 collection is under the full jurisdiction of the art gallery. We do have our own civic collections, which are stored on Burlington Street, and it's a completely separate.
Okay, so the artwork that you're discussing prior to 1967, we're not, we're not putting any staff time into this, it's completely under their purview, they're taking care, maintaining. Okay, thank you, that was, I just want to get that clear. Counselor Green, I'll take the chair back, and I'm going to go to Counselor Jackson, I believe you had a motion.
What I'm going to do, Madam Chair, is I've put everyone on notice, and I'll work after today's meeting, not to catch anyone off guard, with Stephanie, with John Hurtel, and yourself as chair, and put together a motion that basically will bring the art gallery right into the CEF process that they've been in the last three years, and if you will, amend the 10-year-old council direction where they just automatically received it in light of the fact we've got a new process set up for everybody else. But I'll bring that forward at a future meeting.
Okay, so it's not a motion at this time, it's just on notice. So I do need a motion to receive the presentation, please? Motion to receive the presentation, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Green, all those in favor? Thank you. And to receive the report, I need a motion, please, Counselor Marula, Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor? Thank you, so 262, please. And this is the City Enrichment Fund 2017 Community Services Stream Intake Review Follow-up. So are there any questions regarding 6.2? Seeing none? Seeing none? Counselor Green, Counselor Marula, seeing none? Move to receive? Thank you. So Counselor Green, Counselor Marula, all those in favor? Thank you, we're going to 7.1. And this is the YWCA Hamilton's Transitional Living Program presented by Counselor Marula.
And it's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Jackson, whereas the YWCA Hamilton offers 65 beds for single women who are at risk of homelessness to access temporary to one-year safe housing, whereas the YWCA Hamilton's Transitional Living Program provides a valuable service annually to over 100 single women who are at risk of homelessness in our community, whereas in 2016, the program assisted over 50 women in achieving permanent housing situations. Whereas, city of Hamilton staff will continue to work with the YWCA Hamilton to review system pressures and changing funding priorities of the federal and provincial levels of government and assist with identifying alternative, alternate funding opportunities. And whereas the YWCA Hamilton's Transitional Living Program was the highest-rated program in the 2017 Community Services Stream, Category A, No One Is Hungry or Without Shelter, of the City Enrichment Fund, therefore, be it resolved that one-time funding in the amount of $60,000 for the YWCA Hamilton's Transitional Living Program be funded from the City Enrichment Fund Reserve and be approved. And I believe it speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you, and Counselor Green would like to speak?
Thank you very much, and with following up with staff, you'll remember my concern was this being kind of way outside of what I consider to be the policy. We had gone through this conversation vigorously, I've given, made my opinions on the reserve known, I've given my opinions on the supports that we have inside Community and Emergency Services known as it relates to their 1.8% parameter that they've been dealing with. But having met with staff and understanding that even under the block funding, this is not something that could have happened, I am comfortable in supporting this one-time anomaly for the reasons that Counselor Marula has laid before us. And so I just wanted to go on the record and say it was because of the follow-up and the fuller, we had quite a lengthy conversation with staff about where I see some of the deficiencies are, but those are at a much higher level as it relates to our budget and as it relates to the government's, the provincial shift in the Housing First policy, which has kind of left some of these NGOs out in the lurch. But I do need to say this, Madam Chair, that what I've experienced in Community Emergency Services with these provincial shifts has nonprofits coming to the city, and I'm not saying this with the YW specifically, but in a bit of a name and shame kind of way, that if their fundraising goes down, if the province shifts, or as I said to staff, if the province sneezes, we catch the cold. And I feel like that's what's happened here. The urgency of this service and the need far, for me, outweighs my particular issue with how this has gone down, but it should be noted that, you know, in future Community Emergency Service meetings, when the province shifts their funding models, the general public, and I think everybody needs to recognize what that means, is a pressure for the municipality. It means that we end up finding reserve funds like this and other places to try to offset these pressures, because this in a very real way would result in our most vulnerable women potentially being, you know, pushed out of these programs and into temporary day-type shelters. And so for that reason, I'm supporting Counselor Marula and Counselor Jackson. It did take the staff to follow up and kind of go more thoroughly through this to make sure that no stone was unturned, and I do think that there is a, I think, a compelling case for us to revisit how we look at Community Emergency Services in the next budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Madam Chair, just piggybacking on what Counselor Green and Marula have said, the acting GM, Vicky Woodcox, in June presented to ECS, and some of the, if you will, the confusion over information that should have been provided, wasn't provided over the last year, lots of change in the lineups within the city department, so all that was clarified as well. And also, this 60,000 will get them in the ballpark, it'll still be a little bit less than what they received last year annually, if memory serves me right, they got a total of about 125,000, and this will put them in the ballpark about 105 and 110, so again, within the realm, within the range, and for all the good work that the YW does in this Transitional Living Program, I'm supportive, thank you.
Thank you very much. So it's moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Any questions, any comments, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, are there any notices of motions? None. General information, folks, 6.1 and 6.2, according to the clerk, we need to remove them from the outstanding business list. Do we still want to remove the art gallery from the business list, outstanding business list?
No, that, my apologies, and we'll just remove item 6.2, the Community Services Stream Intake Review.
Okay, thank you. So just 6.2 removed from the outstanding business list. Counselor Ferguson, welcome, and Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor? And may I please have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Vanderbeek, Counselor Jackson, thank you, folks.